Okay, good evening, welcome to our December 11th work session. If you'd join me in a moment of silence, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to number two, citizens' comments, and I'm assuming you're all here concerned about the fact that I was taken off the distinguished alumni board at Kenwood when the principal retired. So appreciate you coming for that. But citizens' comments, opportunity for people who live or work in Lakeville to share our comments about issues that are happening. Prefer to have it kept for about three minutes to have something to share while you use that podium. But in, I assume folks are here about the Kenwood land sale based on, you know, TV and media and all those type of things, Facebook updates. I'll just share from our perspective, process is kind of what we would be able to talk to tonight, just because we haven't seen an official, as of this afternoon, anything from the purchaser or developer. I will tell you that the city council takes our land comprehensive plan very seriously. I want to say, I think in the last year, two times have we actually been willing to amend that. Both were denied the first time and came back with pretty serious concessions from the developer and buyer before we approved. So that's kind of setting the table where we're at. If a plan does come forward from the developer, it would go to the planning commission, who would review it and have public input, and then ultimately come to the city council for discussion and voting, and require a fourth this vote of the council for approval. So that's kind of where we're at for process, happy to talk about that, and obviously happy to listen to any thoughts or concerns that you guys are here tonight. So I'll turn it over to whomever wants to start. Again, if we could just keep the three minutes, I'd be grateful. Three minutes each, sorry, not total, three minutes. Three minutes each. Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if it, yeah, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I should say, name and address, it helps our folks keep a record and everything. And then the whole point also is, we'd like to be able to follow up with you to keep you as we kind of move through the process.
Good evening, council, I'm here to speak on the topic of the possible Kenwood Trail Middle School land sale, and this will only take a minute of your time. My name is Henry Caswell, I am a resident of Lakeville at 20319 Kensington Way. I'm also a student athlete at Lakeville South High School, one of hundreds who uses the land at Kenwood Trail Middle School. I know that you have not yet received the official paperwork for the land sale yet, but when you do, I look forward to my and my fellow residents and teammates' opportunity to tell you that this, another housing development, is not the use for this land. Community green space used by our kids, families, and school teams in the middle of Lakeville is what makes us special, and we want you to keep it that way. There are plenty of alternative uses for this land. Thank you, and I look forward for further opportunities to give you much more information.
My name is Don Duffy, I live in Bloomington, Minnesota. I've been on the payroll of Lakeville School District for the last three years, where I have served as assistant coach, and then for the last two years, head coach of the Lakeville Nordic Ski Team. This year, I'm volunteering my time. Over the course of my time watching our athletes, I've seen middle schoolers graduate up and ski in the varsity team. I've seen our varsity skiers go to state to compete. I've seen our skiers leave the area and go to college and compete. I've seen our college athletes return over the winter break to encourage our middle schoolers and our high schoolers to do better. The property that we practice on is at Kenwood. There is about 2.3 miles of trails that we maintain on a volunteer basis. Parents, athletes, other volunteers. We've had donations to secure equipment to groom those trails. They're not only used by the athletes, they're also used by the public. For this to have occurred without any stakeholder involvement of the teams, of the users, just baffles me. So I hope that you can do something to correct that. I appreciate the letters. My wife and I sent you a letter over the weekend, I really appreciate your prompt response, thank you very much.
You're getting off that easy?
Yeah, I can't stand, it's okay if I stand in my chair?
Absolutely.
Just a minute, please. Thank you for your time, my name is Amy Eggers, E-G-E-R-S, and I live at 19172 Kenwood Way. My home backs up to the woods that is proposed to have been demolished. I want to tell you my backstory, I won't take long. November 30th of 2014, I had a massive heart stroke. I've been home since May of 2015, recovering in my living room, basically. My back door looks out the woods, that is my serenity, that is my peace, please do not take that away. I have many animals that come through our yard, we see deer, wood ducks, fox, squirrel, even saw a possum with babies on her back walking through, it was disgusting. My home, my home backs up to two wetlands. We have frogs that are, they go all year round until they're done mating, it's a soothing sound. I invite you all to come to my home and just sit for five minutes, I'm sorry, I'm very anxious here, sit for five minutes and see what I have, see what we have, we've been fortunate enough to live there for almost 20 years now, and I don't want that taken away. We were told when we bought the house that that would never be developed, and I don't know how anybody can promise that, but that's what we were told when we bought that home. I'm, I thank you, I'm sorry if I want to wear a gown.
Hi, I'm an Eagle, 18609 Irvine Trail, Lakeville.
I'm Elise, I live on 20098 Karne South.
And we are part of the Nordic Ski Team, as well as the Cross Country Ski Team, that use trails that Kenwood for our training. I've been a part of the program using those trails for seven years now, and it's been a place, a lot of memories, and it's kind of like, a place where you go, just have fun with your friends, and kind of take a mental break, and it's helped me a lot with the use. And I just want that to be there for the next generation too, as I leave and go to college, and I just hope it'll be a place that I can come back to, so.
I would like to state that I've started a petition called Save Kenwood's Land. This land states, for anyone that is against the purchase of this valuable land, if they should, if this, the sale should be canceled or reversed, and 1,075 people from all over Lakeville, other states have signed this petition stating that they are against the sale of this land. I am going to be a cross-country captain next year, and this is a great valuable green space to be, as Ellen said, as well as do a lot of great practice work for Nordic and cross-country.
I taught at Kenwood for 20 years, I live at 17761 Javelin Court, Kenwood, son went through Lakeville. I will say, I taught science at Kenwood, and we spent many hours of those trails, collecting data, making observations, science classes, and to take that opportunity away from kids. We talk more and more about getting kids away from screens and getting them out in nature, and important to us. So I wrote lesson plans, we developed dichotomous keys to go out and animals, and the conversations you have with kids outside are different than the ones you have inside. The incidental learning and connections that you make with children, out in nature are, I hope that you will think long and hard about reselling that property.
My name is Jackson Thunker, I live at 8355173 Street West. I'm a captain of the Nordic Ski Team, but I'm also an Eagle Scout and a cross-country runner. I've used those trails for countless hours, practice, hang out with my friends. I think we're all pretty furious about what's happening. Apparently my faith in the school board is at about zero right now. I think if a decision like this were to go forward, I don't know if I'd be able to raise my kids in Lakeville. Just earlier this year, a deer gave birth in my yard, because there's no place for them to have the kids anymore. I haven't even been managed properly, so they're all trapped by a golf course. And the deer almost died, so, you know, I think it's pretty important that we realize we're doing for our land. Thank you.
My name is Mark Eggers, and I live at 19141 Kenwood Way. And I've been there for nearly 20 years now. What I understand, most of the school board members had no idea what this land was going to be used for. I don't know how they managed to sell itself without anybody knowing, but they were obviously deceived by it. It may be too late for that. One of my largest concerns is safety, because Kenwood Way, not much more than we go past right, street's only two years old, and I've already told you guys this before, but to plum another street in there, it's just not going to be able to handle it. It's it's barely safe for me to go to work and from work, making U-turn on Kenwood Way, I mean on the Kenwood Trail. And if you triple the traffic going out there, it's going to be problems. Also, I saw surveyors late last week, out in front yards, and I imagine they're surveying our streets, because if they have another street, they're going to have no choice but to make yards wider. And that's going to solve, he'd be in my front yard, they're going to take my backyard away. It's very disturbing for anybody on Kenwood Way. Thank you.
My name is Joanne Paul, I live at 19705 Jersey Avenue, and I just, it's such a treasure back there for the ski team and the Nordic, the track team, and I just, it's so hard to think what we do for our football teams, what we do for our hockey arenas, and we're just taking away something so valuable that other teams come here and they're envious, thinking this is right in their backyard, we'd have to think about busing to Cleary Lake or Thailand, and I just look at the traffic, the runoff that's going to pour into Lake Marion, we've got, just, it's, it's so hard, it's, it's there's just too much to lose, and I really hope that this doesn't fall.
Hey, I'm Josh Walter, I live at 18462 Exonia Avenue, I'm right on 185th Street down here. I'm also a coach at Lakeville North, I work with the track program, but I also get to see a lot of the cross-country runners and a lot of these athletes that are in our school that use this land. And to see it taken from them is really disappointing, but I also want to kind of point out that my yard, right on 185th, I get a lot of runoff from North Lakeville. And my dad lives right across the street on 185th, he's on the south side. This is a designated swamp in the city where it filters a lot of that northern water coming down. Now that flow goes almost directly through this property from what it looks like on the map, and so what other way is a lot of this water going to go from North Lakeville and get to Lake Marion? This is a watershed area, I don't know what other direction the water's going to go. We put houses in, there's already water problems, it seems like, a lot of houses around there. So I think it just needs to be taken in consideration, the flow of water really heavily through this area, and how we could disrupt the watershed throughout the whole, whole Lake Marion area.
Good evening, city council, citizens of Lakeville and interested parties, my name's Rick Ringisen, I'm a lifelong resident of Lakeville, I live at 20085 Italy Avenue, very close to Antlers Park. The reason so many people are here tonight is they're counting on our city council to have the wisdom that our school board did not. We're counting on you to protect a cherished piece of land that is virgin timber, that has virgin timber on it going back before the territory even opened. Finding virgin land in the metropolitan area is almost impossible to find, but here it is, and being well-used. It has been used by the citizens of Lakeville for hundreds of years, over 100 years, but especially by the school district and the community since the 1970s and the Kenwood building opened up. That land was originally designed for the expansion of that to be one of the last high schools we'd ever built in Lakeville, because that building was supposed to double in size. Wisdom that you have. I happen to be a retired teacher for the district that taught social studies, so government meetings are something I have a passion about, and I'm a coach, and I've coached for 45 years, and I'm still coaching in the district. My family's connection to it is my daughter was captain of the Nordic Ski Team. This is a special place for our community. When you take into account the runners from all three middle schools go there, both high schools go there, they compete there, I mean, where are these kids going to run if they're not going to run there? Well, they're going to be on our streets, we all know what the traffic's like in Lakeville nowadays. We really want them on the streets. Not only should this land be protected, it should be preserved forever, it should be put in a park along with all the trail areas, it's special, it could be something really neat. I've served on every future facility task force in our district since 1979, never have we considered selling this land. I served on the Lakeville Envision Task Force that talked about, what's the vision for Lakeville for the next 10 years? And believe me, I looked at the zoning real close, this was not part of it. Where did this come from? Well, we have a school board that has many new members, we have a new superintendent. I'm pretty safe in saying where our superintendent came from in Iowa and in Missouri, they don't have Nordic Ski Teams, right? So I can understand their ignorance of not knowing the use of the land, but not checking with the schools, the ADs, the principals, the academic uses that we use it for, the solar gardens, the joint powers act with the city for the frisbee golf, and all the other things are there. They just, it was plain oversight, they started seeing zeros, dollars and figures, and if we could find somebody else to buy the land, the district could still get their money, and it wouldn't become houses. We have plenty of land for houses, and we are a wonderful city, and we know that we're one of the most attractive in the metropolitan joint, because we have our high-quality schools, but I really don't want to embarrass our school board, but they missed this one. Due diligence was not done by the administration, and they didn't understand the value of it and what it means to our community, and this is not just a use for the school. Our citizens are there, people are walking their dogs, people are running those trails, and we all know how much people love to get out and run and do those things at this time. Please listen, please save the land, please save our school district, please save our board, this is something to be cherished and be held onto and coddled and preserved and protected. This is what's in the best interest of our community, I firmly believe it, and I don't think anybody went into this with any malice, I just think they didn't know the value. And I think the school district looks at it different than the city, and thankfully, you guys have a two-step process, you got a planning commission, you got a city council, you're there looking out for us. Thank you so much for your time tonight, I really
Good evening, my name is Nate Larson, I live at 19172 Jewel Path, which would be the street opened up with this development. My family moved in in 1989, and in 2017 I had the privilege of buying the property from my widow fund. I grew up skiing on these trails, running these trails, and now I have two daughters that I had planned on doing this with them as well. One of the things not mentioned tonight are the amount of teams, student athletes and adults that train on Jewel Path. All year long, they run up and down the street, the mountain bike team, anything you think of, they're out there training. Opening this street would endanger their lives. Thank you.
Last call. So I'm here on a whole different subject, so.
Okay, alright. Yeah, no problem.
My name is Amy Gollly, G-O-L-L-Y, and I live at 9409178 Street West, Lakeville. I grew up in Burnsville, and that was a wonderful community when I grew up, but I think if you ask pretty much any resident of Burnsville now, they regret the amount of growth that took place in that city. I don't know anybody that I graduated with that lived there and stayed there afterwards, because they grew so fast and so far, but there's no open land there anymore. The sports industry suffered, the city suffered, the land value suffered, so I just think it's so important to keep up open land, it would be the deepness of Lakeville here, so.
My name's Brent Eisner, I live at 111137 Jewel Path. So I have a long stretch of property that butts up against that land, it's directly connected to it, basically, so it makes it one large woods, so I'm lucky enough to partake in that scenery daily, it's up right on my back door. Grew up in Lakeville my whole life, Rick Ringisen, a longtime swim coach, it's fantastic being here, having him here today to support us. What I don't think a lot of people have mentioned today is that, it's not about the people here today, it's about the future, we're not talking tomorrow, the next day, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it's, it's going to be gone. I think the school board, 20 years from now, will be like, what, we had all that land? They gave it away? I think they're going to think we're complete idiots. So I think it's not about the people today, which it is, but the future, I think, is what we're really aiming towards, so, thank you.
Yeah, if I could please, we're up there.
Relax.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say, my grandchildren, when they come home, they love to go to Grandma and Marcus's house and take a nature walk, they love to go out and play in the woods, and they go on nature walks around these trails, and they find the most interesting things in Grandma and Marcus' house, whether there's grass or not, it's treasures in their eyes. So that would be so sad if they lost that, because they love coming to Grandma and Marcus' house to go taking nature walks.
My name's Sophia Eisener, and I live on 19237 Jewel Path, and I'm going to real school next year, and I'd like, really like to like, join the track team or like the ski team or something, and it just would be like, it'd be sad if they take away that place, and they wouldn't have any more sports to do there, so.
Pamela, you talk, and then if anyone else, after this issue gets brought up, wants to, I am well.
So, can I pass out some paperwork? There's seven copies there. Okay. I'm Don Schuster, I live on Cherry Avenue, stuff like that, I moved here about 18 months ago, and after I moved here, about six months later, I got a letter from the city that I have to connect to water and sewer. This was very news to me, it wasn't disclosed to me, and stuff like that, so it, you, the first letter there that you see in this correspondence that I got sent to this city, and the past owner didn't inform me of any of this stuff, a lot of the it's not a small project, it's a 60-grand project between the two of us, and I'm not getting any, very low luck so far out of the previous owner, and the city had commitments with the previous owner, I had no idea that maybe it could have been disclosed if it would have been recorded, other than just shoved in the file someplace, or maybe somebody would have just given it another look at before they sent information to the title company. So I'm here looking for some help. It's just gotten really bad, I guess the one thing I'd like to bring up is, on page two there, 2012 is the last communication the city had with the previous owner. It's supposed to report to the city every three years, make sure it was a supplier, I feel the city kind of dropped the ball on this, and all of a sudden, I'm getting kind of a Kenwood for it. And then the one last comment, I guess, because I don't have a lot of time, but number four, if he sold the house, he's saying, forgot this Amy, because since 2012, the city never filed up with them. Unfortunately, and stuff like that, but when I did purchase it, before I purchased the property, I know one of my neighbors said, he did talk to the engineering department just because it wasn't mentioned in the disclosure, he did look at it, the engineering department said, don't worry about it. So I'd like to visit with you sometime on this, if I need more time, at least you can glance through the paperwork, see what I've got looking at, I'd love to have some more time sometime.
Yeah, so I did get an email from our city engineer this morning, and hadn't been able to go over it yet, but I will definitely set up a time for you and I to connect, and then feel free to reach out to other people in the council.
And we did, I've seen communication from your city attorney and stuff like that, and I think it's something that we just need to see if we can work on, turn away or whatever.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch.
Good luck, everybody.
Okay, any other public comment? Well, I want to just, on behalf of the council, and you know, they're obviously welcome to share anything they want to, but we want to express our gratitude, audience for being here, we are listening to you, as I said, we kind of have to go through a process and see what the developer and purchaser wants to do. I'll just say from a respect, if I did walk the land last week, and so I know it well, so I appreciate you guys sharing your personal stories, and I want to share this time.
You shared the process for
So the process would be that a plan would come in from the So the process would be that a plan would come in from the purchaser developer. I would go to the planning commission, the planning commission is a board of appointed people that act as like a judicial body to review our land comprehensive plan. And so they will give a recommendation based on the presentation from the developer and getting, they'll have public hearing, public input. And then make a recommendation to the council either direction, then we, as council, have similar immediate city hall, public comment. And we would make a decision on the land request. So we would have to have a legal reason to not do that, and currently, if they are going to residential, it's not zoned for that. And part of the issue is, to protect the taxpayers, we will have plenty of reasons to be able to talk about that, because we don't want to get sued. So there's a legal aspect that we have to maintain and kind of preserve our comprehensive land. Public open space.
You should probably come to the podium.
Yeah, if you want to just ask questions, yeah, it's okay. Yeah, public open space is at the busy. So, and I forgot to mention, you know, the city does have a joint powers agreement with the school district for our Frisbee golf course. And so it's a land that the city has more vested interest in, I'll just, I'll say that.
When Dan Bell and.
Can you please come to the podium?
Yeah. Yep. No.
Dan Bell and Steve Milton volunteered first to build those trails. Dan was doing, he had a science company, he had some designations for some of the areas of Manville. I don't know if that was DNR. Or where that came from, but is that something we're going to be looking at too?
I would imagine, I don't know anything about that, but I will make a note of it and we'll connect with our planning people.
The board was looking through Dan's old files, because his desk is still back in the science office, she was trying to find. If she could, any paperwork regarding that, but I think he had set some of that up for us. Thanks.
Howard Schneider, I live on one nine six three four Jersey Avenue. And I guess two comments, first, I really do want to thank you again, people have said that. I mean, the openness to listen to citizen comments here about this issue. We've had students, parents, grandparents, like myself, speaking about this. So it's really a wonderful, unfortunately, a wonderful contrast to how the school board has conducted this business. I did mention to you when I walked in, related to Dan's comment about the process. What I saw in the six minutes, they're only publicly available to us from the school district. The school board and the key leaders there apparently think it's pretty much a done deal except for possibly minor design changes. And I think that's on their misunderstanding, I didn't mean to accuse you of having stat and them, or what's that phrase, getting ahead of their skis. So I would hope that in some future discussions, you've already begun that, to make that clear, that you have a process, you summarize that briefly. But I would hope that can be communicated, because they really were quite clear in their comments. When a board member asked, so that would be, that road would be the responsibility, would be a city road. And there would be that new roundabout, and they would take care of all those good things like road maintenance and snow plowing, and the answer was yes. So I hope that you can disabuse them of that notion. But again, thank you so much for being open to listening to all the citizen comments. And I'm sorry, I was out that land on Friday, so we missed each other.
Well, I will say, I think it's been a longstanding position of our parks department that we would be disappointed if the land was sold because of that relationship, so I'll just leave it. Thank you.
Tough position that school districts can put in, because they really set out to do a good thing. And I don't think they really realized what they were blocking away or selling away. But the timing of the announcement of the sale couldn't have been more destructive for the last letting. Came out in the weekend paper that it was sold. When you consider all of the kids that have run on those trails and skied on those trails, and the people in our community who walked those trails. That have used it as kind of this jewel in this park. The number, we passed question one for the new elementary. But question two came up less than a hundred and fifty votes from passing. And that's about three point, three point three million dollars, it's like thirty-three million dollars over operating funds for our district over a decade. And that voted, that was voted down. And when I'm out in the community and I see people, I voted no, I voted no. What are they thinking? They gotta be punished. I'm like, yeah, you punished our kids. Yeah, you punished the school board, you put them in a tough spot, you're gonna make their job harder, but you punished the kids. But you know what? I understand why they voted no, I understand why we didn't get that letting. And that article was probably timed, if you can do those kind of things. You know, to kind of put a pat on the back for our district, and it was really a punch in the gut. Really hard. So, you know, there's a lot of factors, and I know you'll be talking to the district. But if you look at it and you talk to people, there were a lot of mistakes made. Just a ton of mistakes made on this process. Because the district could have ended up with the same amount of money if they had decided to go forward with preservation, as opposed to houses. You know, and that's really the best interest for the use of the community. So, again, counting on your wisdom here. And, you know, I would love it if Lennar would go, wow, we didn't know that that land was used that way, we didn't know that either, maybe we should just walk away. Wouldn't that be wonderful? That would save everybody the embarrassment and take this off your. Agenda too. So, you know, sometimes good things happen. Just because, you know, it's a wonderful life, isn't it?
Our really last call now. Again, thank you, we're gonna move on to our item three, that's our legislative priorities draft, you're welcome to stay or not. If you're gonna head out, I'll probably just take like two minutes break to let. Okay, Mr. Cannon and Ms. Miller, I believe, brought it up.
Team sufferings.
Yeah.
Yeah, the council, as you're aware, every year we do legislative, twenty twenty-four is no different, so. Courtney has put together some drafts, priorities for you guys to consider, and I'll turn over to you some deals that have been changed in the last year's version.
Thank you, so as Alan said, it's kind of a routine document that we put together every year, so that we can keep our legislators updated as well as their state affairs and evidence. Couple of key changes this year, including school resource officers and urgency at the same time. There were several items that were changed in the last legislative session, so those are our new items in this document. Couple other items that have been updated, just differences that have changed from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. The regional public safety training facility, storage of rail cars, the County Route Fifty and I thirty-five bridge. Cannabis usage, as well as some other items, so I'll open it up for questions or discussions.
Okay, council, are there any, there are a couple items that I wanted to flag, but do you want to go section by section or just want to jump around?
Yeah, I would just recommend going. I want to see.
Okay, yeah, that's works fine, so let's, we'll start with state mandates local authorities, so it looks like we pulled the salary and compensation limits out.
That was repealed.
That was repealed. B, post office improvements, just added, changing our number there, population. C, school resource resource officer, SROs, probably is some language from the biggest cities, probably, anybody have any concerns? Public safety training, D. Added two paragraphs there, I think, very clear on fact that this project, for a variety of reasons, is a little bit bigger than when we first talked about a couple years ago. If anybody had a. Put there, okay. The first thing that I kind of just had flagged for the storage of railroad cars, I think the red stuff is fine. The sentences, the project includes construction. We don't know if that's what the long-term plan would be, so if we could just be less specific, that would be helpful, so just that. It's just the sentence about the ninety-car storage, thirty-car transload. Because I'm funding those numbers may be different, so I just didn't want to call that out and just leave it, just pull that sense out of that. Good? Anybody else have anything real? Fifteen thirty-five, there's some pretty big connections there.
I just wanted to verify that the way we're describing this is up to date with where we're at with state and federal funding. Because I've heard Commissioner Holberg talk about this on a few different occasions, I just want to make sure the messaging is the same and sort of complementary. So. I would say it's up to date as what we know it today. So it's changing, you know, pretty rapidly, but I think it stays, it's pretty generic, so.
Do you have any?
I can't hear him.
He's just saying he thinks it's up to date from.
I just wanted to verify that this is how you're describing this project as well.
I think it's fine.
Okay, great, thank you.
The dollar amounts keep changing, so every time we do a document with the dollar amount, then it changes, so.
Are these top six in just random order, or they are participating order?
The six are priorities, but there are no particular. A few years ago, we had kind of had them ranked, and then we decided to kind of have ones that were very specific and then having a bunch of other information. So if you were saying with legislature, okay, well, it used to be one page, now it's a page.
The county has this as number one.
The fifties, yeah, three. Okay, moving on to the local control, specifically about adult-use cannabis, there's a whole bunch of new stuff in there. I think we've talked about this quite a bit, I feel comfortable with this language, I don't know.
My only comment was on the last bullet. It seems redundant to say the city opposes any proposals to diminish local control, only because, we talked about it in the first priority as well.
Yeah.
To me, it implies that the city is against it. And, you know, we may, may very well be, I just don't know if that's how we want the.
Yeah, I get that, my only, my biggest concern is, the legislators, as they talk about this, the phrase they always use is, well, we've been tweaking liquor laws for a hundred years, we're gonna tweak cannabis laws. I'm okay with being redundant, just because, sure.
Well, I'm comfortable with being redundant in the fact that what if this is the only section they look at? I mean, if they're looking at the document, they look at the table of contents, they flip to it, do you know what I mean? And so if that's the only thing they look at, then you want to make sure that the statement's there, that, you know, that we keep our local control as much as we can.
The letter B, this is another one that I had issue with, I'd gotten retailers reached out to me, and they totally understand our perspective about protecting. You know, kind of our enterprise, and we're just concerned about the red area that we had added. I was comfortable with just taking that out if everyone else felt that was okay, and just maintaining that first part, but wanted to have discussion about it.
So you're proposing removing the red text?
Yeah, just leaving it the way it's always now, at least the way it was last year.
How does this proposed change enhance this section? It's meant more for education, there's a narrative out there that three-two beer and three-two beverages are going away, and that's just not the case. And so we wanted that to be out there.
Honestly, it was a confusing narrative to me. I was trying to figure it out, I mean, I was like, so I got really confused by the narrative of what it meant for. The no low and what, you know, et cetera, so.
We can take it out, that's fine.
Oh, I agree, maybe just take it out. Because I don't know how to correct it.
Can I make sure the minutes show that I'm stating on any discussion on this topic, I've got a potential conflict of interest with my employer, so we participate in the discussion then.
Letter C, elections. So we've got a couple new provisions in there. I'm comfortable with these, I think we all know. How expensive elections are to maintain. Okay. Matt Council Governor, no changes.
I did have a comment about that though.
Okay.
Because there is a task force currently running at the moment, I didn't know if I wanted to call that task force out and seek a voice in that decision or recognition. I don't understand the full process of that task force. Yeah, I mean, I guess my take is the task force composition is, the composition is pretty established, and they've already been meeting for several months. They're still taking public comments. You could submit a letter stating our, using this language, if that were, that is our, the house meeting. Yeah, I know Representative Kosnick saw it, and we have a local connection.
Nothing new to revenue restrictions there, data practices. Anything that anybody's concerned about that part? This is similar to voting, it's expensive to do this, and other governmental support is important. Keeping it over in that urn, sick and safe time, I think this is obviously something we've talked about quite a bit, the local business community has talked about, so. Having that in there, I think, is one. Stick to the next, because there's nothing redlining. Stick to the next, cause there's nothing red line. That's the end of the document. Any other feedback you can put? Commissioner? Okay.
Um. How would you like to share this? So in past years, at the first session in January, uh, we invited our legislative delegation, it'll be before the session starts this year. So that's usually a habit issue, as the session started, it's usually harder to get in there. But we can invite them and have them at the top of the agenda, just have a discussion with them. We'd always, we also include our county commissioners as well as the council and our federal delegation. Well, um, sometimes they, they're a little sensitive, so.
I think we should.
I, I just like the fact that we have a dialogue with them and they can ask questions and, you know, and get a better understanding of where we're coming from.
Good.
Well done.
Good job.
With exception to the item that I can't comment on.
Yeah, really.
Oh, and just kind of in this realm now that the federal congressional schedules have been published for twenty four. We're looking at, uh, hosting like a symposium or forum on the thirty five fifty project where we would invite electives on all levels, um, from Burnsville, you know, Lakeville, Scott, Pony, you know, so we'd invite the two senators. Sanders, Loma and Craig, and then anybody else that, uh, has an interest in this part of the region and not upgrade of thirty five from Burnsville down to one eighty fifth, um, and to do a dog and pony and try and get everybody on the same page, talking the same issues. Cause it's kind of complex and it's moved, uh, in different ways. And we really feel like the time is now given that that project was the highest scored project recorders of commerce in the whole state that did not get funding. So we're, we're kind of getting up there, so.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah. Uh, all right, moving on to B, potential housing programs, and I'll turn it over to developments leader, to Goodroad, to give us staff. And maybe kind of tell us what you want us to think about.
Yeah, what we're hoping to start doing tonight, uh, mayor and council is to start, um, having a conversation and hearing how you all want to prioritize the direct local housing aid. So as you know, the legislature passed a very large, um, billion dollar, um, bill for a variety of housing programs. Some of that is through a new metropolitan regional sales teams that will trickle down to communities that are over ten thousand in population. So Lakeville will receive a distribution this first year in twenty twenty four of three hundred eighty five thousand one hundred seventeen dollars. And in your packet, um, there's projections, um, provided for estimates for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six may go up, um, depending on, um, sales tax resources. Um, we are to utilize those funds only for affordable housing assistance to households at a hundred and fifteen percent of area median income or AMI for any projects related to homeownership or eighty percent of the AMI for any projects or funding programs that we create for rental. So I just threw in the staff report for a household of four, what those two AMIs are. So at a hundred and fifteen percent, we're talking about a household income of a hundred and forty three thousand six hundred and fifty. And an eighty percent AMI for rental is, uh, for a family of four is ninety four thousand six hundred and fifty. Um, in the packet was a more detailed spreadsheet that included the AMI based on your household, and this is twenty twenty three dollars. Um, I have, or twenty twenty three, I don't have the twenty twenty four AMI amounts, but I should shortly. Um, again, I wanted to also provide some information, I got it from deed that kind of spoke to our types of industries in Dakota County. It's not Lakeville specific, but it's, um, rounded out to Dakota County, um, just with some salary data, just so you can kind of relate. What kind of incomes do people have in our different job categories? And how do they compare to these AMIs? And I think a lot of times you'll look at sixty percent, eighty percent, and certainly a hundred and fifteen percent of AMI is really not being as low as I think a lot of people expect. Um, it's still, um, a healthy income, but then when you compare that to what people's rents might be, um, what down payments might be for purchasing a home, it does start to be a struggle. So just wanted to provide some context, so you kind of know the types of households, um, that these dollars are aiming to serve. Um, cities must spend each year's allocation within the third following year. So we have three years to spend. Um, we'll have to be submitting reports starting in twenty twenty five, um, to provide documentation to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency as to how we used our funds. They'll verify that we're using it correctly.
Can you just clarify?
Yep.
It's considered spent though if we put it in a trust fund.
Yep.
So we think buys ourselves some more time.
It does.
Okay.
Yep. I believe that is correct.
One more quick question about that, does it accumulate? So if this is an annual tax and we have this much and we have this much left over, would we get the next year?
It's just like stated.
Okay.
Yep. Exactly, good questions. So I put together general categories of how we could utilize this funding. Um, based on, you know, and this, I'm not, we're not limited to this list, you all may have ideas I didn't think of. Um, so we're open to, you know, this is why the point of this conversation. But I broke down categories of affordable, development related, either owner occupied or rental. Preservation of affordable housing, again, owner and rental, home buyer assistance, and then kind of another category. So the development, that one's kind of the obvious one. City funds could be utilized to create new affordable housing. So whether that's at the homeownership or whether it's the end, um, at the rental, you understand what those AMAI, AMI goals would be. Um, but we could utilize our funding for construction costs, gap financing, demolition, site acquisition, those kinds of activities that would lead towards development. So imagine a partnership with a affordable housing developer, um, who might have some gap financing. They may come to us and ask us to utilize some of these funds for that project. Oftentimes, when it comes to development projects, you're going to need an accumulation of a couple of years for us to have the kind of funding that would be worthwhile for those kind of development costs. And I think that gets to the mayor's point of setting up a local housing trust fund that the money can just sit and accumulate and we can utilize based on a plan and priorities, um, that you want to implement. But that is a tool. Um, second, really kind of gets at our NOAA or really preserving all of our naturally occurring affordable housing. And so one program that we currently do is, um, every year we have probably around, it varies a hundred grand to a hundred and twenty grand that we utilize our CDBG funds. Those funds are then utilized by Dakota County CDA to fund a home improvement loan program. Now, the AMI is at sixty percent through the CDBG program, and I think the maximum loan amount is thirty thousand. So the count, CDA already administers that program, we hand off our dollars, they get that money out to Lakeville residents using that allocation. What the CDA would like to do is expand that program, and they're calling it Enhanced Housing Rehab Program, where they would have broader reach up to a hundred and fifteen thousand AMI and up to fifty thousand dollars in loans. But what they're asking for is if we, if they create such a program, they're asking for cities in Dakota County to commit to some dollars from our funds in order for them to be able to staff up and administer that program. But it is an option versus creating such a program ourselves or replicating the work of the CDA. Other preservation efforts could be a very similar program geared solely at seniors. CDA does do this, uh, they have one program. Um, but we could create a program that's geared only towards seniors, any kind of maintenance, repair, um, or amenities that need to be offered to senior housing to keep people, keep seniors in their housing for as long as possible. So maybe it's a loan that goes towards a ramp, um, grab bars, things that make their home more accommodating. We could also create programs specific to rental rehabilitation. Um, we don't have a lot of older apartments, um, but we have some. And as we age, those will also age. And so we may want to see some improvements made to mechanicals, um, exterior improvements, et cetera. Again, it gets a little trickier when you're dealing with multiple units, cause then we need to deal with the in, in, income verification, but it is certainly possible. Um, the CDA does do a similar program through their hope. Um, so again, wouldn't have to be something that we would replicate, but we certainly could using our dollars. And then the last one is, um, also related to NOAA is home buyer assistance. So creating some kind of a down payment assistance to get folks into our more affordable, um, naturally occurring affordable housing. So whether that's, you know, a grant, um, a very low interest loan, spread out the cost, something that helps a homeowner get to the finish line. I preface this with, um, really wanting to dig into exactly what Minnesota Housing Finance Agency is doing with all their dollars. They're staffing up and trying to figure it out, and this is one of the buckets they really see, um, adding a lot of their dollars to. We might not need to replicate it, we just might need to advertise that that program exists at the state level to get that in the hands of our residents. Again, we're limited, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, three hundred and five thousand, it's going to go very, very quickly. Other ideas I threw in here, um, improvements, um, grants to help residents with minor property code violations. This is something that's becoming a little bit more common in some of our communities around us that are a little bit older and residents running into, um, problems with, you know, whether it's a, a failing fence or something else that they're getting code violations for, but they just simply don't have the money to fix. Is there a pot of money that we could create at? Radar?
Ask a question?
Yep.
I mean, I'm not suggesting, but just for reference. So would that also qualify for, um, helping the homeowner out that needed sewer and water connection?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, radar mitigation, um, this is becoming, uh, a very common improvement. It's something that's automatically taken care of in our new home construction, but not, um, in our existing housing. And, um, it's rampant across Minnesota. Um, I think it's becoming a more common improvement. Um, we could partner with homeowners and, um, share in that cost, you know, maybe it's a, a matching grant or something to that in, um, effect. And then lastly, kind of a way to control these buckets is to create, um, a local housing trust fund. Any governmental unit can do that. Um, you can do all of these programs within a local housing trust fund. Um, I've not developed a local, I have not worked for a community and led that effort, but I've been doing some homework. Um, it doesn't seem too overly complicated, coming up with a plan, understanding how we want to utilize these dollars so that anybody who comes to us and apply for them understands, um, kind of where they stand with the kinds of projects that they have. Um, the nice thing about a local housing trust fund too is if the council were to choose to levy in the future, utilize your HRA levy tool, um, you could levy, um, a specific amount of funds to, um, beef up along with the direct local housing aid, um, any additional housing dollars. Um, you can also take donations and other resources, uh, to utilize all within this funding umbrella. Dakota County CDA has had a, um, trust fund for years, they call it their whole program. They are seeking, they're on their own, seeking guidance as to whether local dollar, local aid cities are receiving could be utilized, um, through their trust fund, but then allocated only to that community. Feels complicated, but they're researching it. I do want you to know that the CDA is hosting the mayor managers meeting in January, um, about collaborating on all of this. And there probably have other ideas as well. And I think they're even submitting a proposal to our city administrators and managers as to how they would like to, to see the ability to partner. I think in some levels it makes sense to utilize and partner with their resources rather than, um, replicating things like the home improvement loans. Um, but there are things we can certainly do in-house. And so tonight, I just want to hear your thoughts. Um, am I missing the mark? Do you have other ideas, things that you think are just gaps, um, in our housing resources so that we can start to put a plan together to utilize these funds early next year?
Thank you, this is great. Um. My initial thought is having our own local allows us to do a lot of different things and have flexibility. So I would think that that was the direction we want to go to, because we could probably use that to fund the county or not. Um, I'll just share with you guys some conversations I've had with the regional council mayors, um, and what other cities are thinking about, and then also some conversations I had with entities in the community. Had a conversation with three sixty communities. They said this year alone, they spent over a million dollars on emergency rental assistance. Um, that continues to be a need in Lakeville and other parts of Dakota County. And so I think that's something we should think about is partnering with them and maybe helping to beef up that fund for them. Um, something to explore. Uh, another thing that's been working in Edina and Roseville is partnership with Habitat for Humanity, where they take older homes. The city buys them and owns the underlying land in a trust. And then, um, Habitat fixes up the house and then sells it to a family who, you know, has a mortgage and then the city gets paid back. So it's kind of a tool, um, to help people buy homes instead of just starting from scratch for Habitat. So I think that's an interesting concept. Um, I do know that the county at one point owned like twenty or thirty homes that Habitat is acquiring right now in Lakeville in particular. There were county rentals that are now owned by Habitat, thirty might be high, but it's, it's a number. Um, so there's that conversation, but then the other things I think there is good. And, and lastly, um, personally, I think we've gotten to a point where having a conversation with the county about another senior CDA apartment probably makes sense. I don't know if that's where they're at, but I think if we've built up some of this, we could be pretty helpful. I mean, that's just my perspective, but want to open it up.
Can I ask one question, Tina, a, a little bit? Um, I, I don't recall the, how the formula works for this. I noticed that much smaller, well, not much smaller, but smaller cities in Dakota County than us got double as much money. Is it based on existing affordable housing or do you know that?
Yeah, it, it's a very complicated, I can send you an additional PowerPoint if you'd like. Um, but it is, um, largely based on cost burdened households. So like you said, um, our, our amount compared to Burnsville's amount, there's much greater, their population's a bit less than us. So it's based on the amount of cost burden, largely based on the amount of cost burden. But if you'd like, I can give you more data on how that calculation was put together if you're interested.
I'd like to see it.
I'll send it to you. Okay. I didn't want to get into that nitty gritty in this memo, but I do have it.
The other idea that I, that I had, you, you mentioned the program that, um, helps seniors stay in their houses. I was thinking of kind of the opposite of that. Um, I think there's a number of seniors that are looking to make the transition into independent living, but might need some financial assistance for that. Um, that would open up existing housing stock. And also I think we've got vacancy in our existing senior housing too.
So that costs and things like that?
Yeah, like a moving cost or a first month rent or something like that. I, I just think my neighbors that have been in their house since nineteen sixty seven.
Yeah.
And they're just, they're getting sick of shoveling and, and, uh, you know. So, cause those are house, those are desirable houses, I think, too, for the most part, because they're a little more affordable in many cases.
I mean, excuse me. Uh, my thoughts went to this home buyer assistance for a couple of reasons. Um, that's, I mean, that's how I ended up in Lakeville, was I, I got some home buyer assistance for a first time home buyer. Um, and I think we'll always be a little stronger if we can partner. Um, but my feeling is, and I agree with the mayor, that whatever we can do to be unique to Lakeville, um, I, I think we, we can do that. And I, I also agree with, uh, this naturally occurring affordable housing. And I, you know, there's probably some people that are in houses that they've been in there for decades and they don't really know how or have the means to get out. So whatever we could do to help get them into the next stage or level of housing, um, in the, in our community, I, I think would be good. Uh, and then the final thing that I would really consider is just, uh, maybe grants or something to, uh, do renovation on naturally affording, naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, if I'm going to buy this house, uh, all the carpet is shade carpet and, uh.
What are you saying, you know?
I shouldn't say that. You know, and the appliances are avocado green and, you know, I'm just saying, if it, if it needs a serious makeover from fifty, sixty years ago. Um, some people can walk in and see that and they're very good at doing it themselves. Other people walk in and see it and go, boy, I wonder if I have enough money to be able to do this. So I, I, I would say to me, those are the three things that jumped out for me.
There was a, I took advantage, when I was right out of college, there was certain housing crisis, there was tax deferred where you get seventy five hundred dollars, you paid back five hundred a year for fifteen years.
Yeah.
But it was to do. But it was to do, again, renovations.
Do some renovate, new carpet, new cupboards, appliances, those types of things.
Thank you for all these ideas. I think really is a combination of multiple of them. Free spot, but the metric that I keep thinking about is the flow chart that was presented at the manufacturer's appreciation workshop about the flow of people who live here and work outside versus how many folks are living outside of Lakeville and, and, and work here. I mean, the data is showing that our, our wages are lower than the cost of living, average-wise. And so to me, the metric, the needle that I'd like to see move is how many folks are living and working here? So folks that can afford to live and work in Lakeville. And, and so I don't, I don't know what the right combination there is.
How do you keep them here if they get some kind of assistance and decide to leave their job after a year?
Well, no, I mean, part of it is that there are jobs here, but
But I mean, we loaned them money based on the fact that we wanted them to live here in Lakeville. How do you keep them here?
I think if some of the, some of these programs, I think, get to the idea of that initial transition cost, that could keep them here, if they can just get here initially. I think there are probably other ideas that rental insurance, as well, or insurance, rental assistance. I, some of those programs could help with that. Nothing's a guarantee, but I think part of the guarantee is trying to, is always having programs that pay us back in some way if we're going to initially assist with something like that. There was one thing on here that I didn't see. I don't know if it quite fits with the, the work of this money, but several times, there's been a, a fire or a natural disaster where a home needs to be rebuilt, or there's temporary housing that's needed for folks. I know there are some resources out there for those situations, but maybe this pool of funds could assist with rebuild or temporary housing if needed.
Think I'm hearing that local option, number one. Maybe kind of take some time to think through maybe a couple of targets and where we want to put the money once it's accumulated a little bit, is kind of
Go through and kind of figure out what it, what it'll take to create the trust fund. And I know there's some community engagement that's recommended through it, some prioritization, you know, coming up with a plan. We can start working through that in January. But I think I have a good idea of the direction that you're looking for, and it's kind of expected, so. But some of these other ideas are great. Rental assistance, I think, is really important. I think will work towards seniors, and I, I like your suggestion, Dan, of, of even, you know, helping people be able to move out when they're ready, because that is super valuable housing for that person, that young family that
Probably not a lot of contract.
Yeah.
There's even probably some community safety issues.
We'll get our first allocation next year.
Yep. Yep, so it'll be distributed kind of like stated.
That is December of this year.
Is it this year, four twenty-four? You might be right, might be right after Christmas, yeah. But again, we have three years, so we don't have to panic. We don't have to rush. I do think we'll probably get some, you know, it'll be interesting to see the proposal that the CDA puts out. But again, what I'm hearing is create programs that are unique, that we need right here in Lakeville.
Yes, my only thought is, is, you know, how are we going to get the most bang for the buck? Because if we split this out in six different ways.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, as we continue to come forward, I think we need to decide, you know, target it on one or two.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, probably. Which to me, the metric is greatest impact as well. You know, I think that's just another way of saying what you just said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea of transitioning. I've always said the domino effect in this community is, you know, there's a roadblock where there's people who can downsize or won't. Got this glut. Mary Liz, we'll pay for your moving company. If you're willing to sell your house.
All right. Any other comments?
Can I, can I just a little bit here? So the board has not made any final decisions on any plans, so I I feel kind of like there might be some misinformation. My apologies if it came from the staff, we're having a work session. I think at the January meeting, we'll be looking for feedback or input at the county managers' meeting and the CDA around housing. So, but I, I want to make sure that I can accurately represent that your inclination is to not turn your money into the county or whatever, that you're going to do your own programs and possibly use some county infrastructure if necessary to expedite or have efficiencies.
Yeah, I think that would be accurate. We wouldn't be just turning it over to the county, but partner potentially or whatever.
Yeah, because somewhere in here it talks about probably a proposal, or like, well, I have not been advocating. I've been saying that that was my sense, that Lakeville would be, you know, doing their own thing and maybe partner, you know, on similar programs for administration and stuff, but not
That came more from CDA staff.
Okay. And I'm looking at this, it has a name, it has numbers, and I'm just kind of like, whoa. You know, you talked about this, so I just want to, okay, thanks. And then we, we at the county, of course, are struggling with some of the most difficult housing issues with shelter and, you know, we, you know, so we continued the workforce housing. The, the pro, uh, two latest ones in Lakeville, when we actually did the analysis of how many of them lived in, were, lived in the workforce housing and actually worked in Lakeville, and it was like less than twenty percent, actually. You know, so it, some of these things have some real challenges out there, and I think you would probably see the majority of the county dollars going into these areas where the reality is, is we have tried new things. We built a, a single and a studio gateway up on Robert Street in West St. Paul, trying to cater to that retail worker, restaurant worker. And what we're finding is that, and that doesn't have any services in that building, but it has lots of issues. So we're finding that some of these lower price points come with a real need for services and other things with them that are very expensive. And we'll probably, you know, look at investing in some of those things as well. And then we did put in a policy where we would save in our family townhomes, one unit for families experiencing homelessness. We've been doing that for about a year, whatever. Quite frankly, it's not going well. And again, people just need, it's very hard to go from a homeless situation without any services, plop somebody in an apartment or a townhome and say, go for it. Oh, it, it doesn't work. So we're really trying to look at that paradigm of service and progression, if you will, with incentives for moving through the housing continuum. But that area was the most challenging, so I think where we'll end up spending. And then also seniors, we haven't done a senior thing since the one behind Cub, that's the last senior building that we've done. But, but the issue of opening up affordable housing for young families, et cetera, is a goal as well. So that would be another area that we used to do. We kind of got away from it, but I think there's some interest in refocusing in that as well. So if you got a good spot for a senior, we like them to your grocery stores and a doctor's office, library, whatever.
Yeah, Ken would.
That would be something I'd say, if you're interested in senior housing, start looking for a spot. We're not next up, but if we have the right spot, we might get a project.
Okay. Thank you again. We'll now move on to a future discussion. Got one more meeting in twenty twenty-three next week. City Hall. Their community or city administrator updates.
So now we just are in the final phase of the HR director search. So hopefully they're going to offer this, this week. Cool.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just, well, I just wanted to add on. So we're going to have a closed session at the next meeting for the, for the administrators review. But we were scheduling it for five fifteen. Do you think we need to move it up even more to five? I mean, how much time do you think? Last time we, we were at five thirty, and it seemed like we were a little bit rushed. So at this point, we're tentatively at five fifteen, but we wanted to ask the rest of the council what you thought. If you thought you wanted to move it up to five or four thirty or something.
I think if we, this is my take, if we have forty-five minutes with Austin, thirty with Justin, so five fifteen would be fine.
Okay.
Kind of just, we, I think part of the challenge, actually, we were not paying attention. We just let it go too long, like the
Hard cutoff.
Hard cutoff.
It's a clock. This is good for public, Public Safety Committee. We used to have a presentation, the police chief presented a phlebotomy program to patrol officers that would give people training to, especially with the cannabis cases now, get people training.
What kind of program did you say?
Phlebotomy.
Oh, okay. I said lobotomy.
No, they, they received training from the BCA, much like the DRE training and the intoxicizer training. On doing blood draws for evidentiary purposes.
The only thing I had is on tomorrow's school board agenda, I believe they'll have the accepting of, extending the renewal of Hossi Arena. The Hossi family has made that commitment for ten years, plus another renewal of ten more after that. And then it'll come to us for, and then also the arena's board, so. Part of the family's commitment was to ask the city to work with some local people to help do some matching fundraising to go along with it. Working on that, but agreement will be able to read it. Great for their continued support of the
This is not a committee update. It's just more something that wasn't such, so few things are not advertised on social media that I just want to put this out there. I had a chance to fill a void where Luke was asked to talk to folks that were turning a hundred years old at Mills, and Luke did a, a great video for them. And then I just got to sit there and, and meet people, and they were just so enthusiastic about having city officials there to, to honor them. Their stories about how long they've lived in this city, how much they love this city, and just the idea of turning a hundred, and how much life they've lived was just a really neat opportunity. And so it's something you wouldn't have seen on Facebook or put on any newsletters. A nice job on the video, too. They all laughed, and he wasn't there, but they were.
I told him, and I was like, I don't want to go. Yeah, one of them, one of them is, was Bob Lerson's mom. So if you guys know Bob, his mom was turning.
Best part was everyone had their own cake with their face on.
I love it. Uh, Jeff, can you give me?
Can I provide one update, as long as I'm here? I thought CEP was going to be on the work session and not, but that's fine. Hamburg and fifty, lots of accidents. We had a three-way, three-vehicle two weeks ago. Final report is due out December fifteenth for improvements. It'll be recommending a roundabout. I'm trying to fast-track it with No City Cost Share. So as soon as that report comes up, don't look for in January. Trying to get it on the agenda to provide the dollars for the preliminary engineering. We already owned two corners when we did the first project, so we're hoping there won't be a lot of right-of-way issues. But that one's been a growing problem.
It's not an oval about.
I don't know if they can like, I don't know. I don't know what shape it would be to take the two corners that we already own, but hopefully they would be in order to accommodate for that, so.
Thank you. We appreciate the effort of No City contributions because
I just hope three other commissioners agree with me.
Yeah, I mean, so you guys that weren't here, that, that was a project that had been done with some city and it just, the technology of lowering or changing the elevation did not improve the traffic safety like we thought. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second, also favor. Sure. You guys next week?